We're gonna do something a little bit funky, we're gonna start with the budgets, then we're gonna get into the school board. First of budget.
First of what?
Budget. Budget hearing committee? So basically, last time we met, uh, we group. Budget. So now we're gonna be calling for any public input on the budget. Fascinating, man did a fantastic job or financials or all fantastic. Is there anything I need to read or we need to read?
Um, not necessarily just the, uh, the resolutions. Um, I can give like a little quick summary before we go on without a few slides.
That would be fantastic.
So on May twenty first, twenty twenty five, the budget committee of the Van Leeuwen District approved the twenty twenty five point six fiscal year budget in the amount of twenty million, two hundred fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. The twenty twenty five approved budget provides sustained funding for currently filled founding positions for some role consolidation plans to increase efficiency. It maintains current programs and services and provides continued support for a full year, full full year access to professional development, curriculum and materials purchases, and necessary building and ground maintenance. We recognize that like many districts we cross organ will must make strategic adjustments and find ways to cut costs and more operate within our financial means and adjust if revenue is lower than projected or if expenses are higher than projected. This responsible approach will help ensure that the Van Leeuwen District remains stable and strong as we future. Even in the face of fiscal pressure, our focus remains on labor rights, the resourceful responsible stewards of public funds, and to ensure that every student continues to receive a comprehensive, high-quality education that prepares them to reach their role.
Thank you. One last comment, if anybody wants to join our board next year, it's fascinating how school budgets work. It's a lot of numbers and graphs, a man did a fantastic job of making it simple so I could understand it. So I figured if I can understand it, most people can understand it. Thanks for doing this. I know it's hard to button. All that, I'm going to take a motion to close. Can I make, uh, can I get a motion to approve our? Budget? Favor? Vote? Now. Now.
Whoever you say.
Who wants to read it now? Make motion to close the budget here. Now let's open up. Then it's cool for reading, yay! Uh, any public input for items on our agenda? Five oh consent agenda, approve regular minutes for last month on May twelve, twenty twenty five. Second? Favor? Three, um, so. Jumping onto the course and discussion. I'll say thank you, Adam, for your time this year and all your reports, putting this process, that's well done, fantastic, and solid experience about world as presentations of that castle. We'll jump down five point oh. Pay the bills. There the book, all favor, pay those bills. Approve the five point oh two, approve those twenty five, twenty six district calendar. Just more revenue reading. And I got an approve, or if I get a motion. Discussion?
I'm sorry, actually, one question, you know, those questions.
Yeah, it's a reminder.
Yes.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there won't be any adjustments to the startup school.
Thank you. Yay! So, uh, can we get a vote, uh, on David? New calendar. Five point oh three. Now the resolution. Prove resolution one, stopping with budget making appropriations and closing taxes for ending taxes.
I read all this.
Yes.
Alright, so when I get the answers. I read all these amounts here, we're just doing same here. Okay. Alright, whereas the budget committee of the Van Leeuwen School does per fifty four student budget with fiscal year twenty twenty five and six, the amount twenty million, two hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred and six dollars day twenty first, twenty twenty five, and therefore a resolution about these legends, making appropriations, imposing taxes, and categorizing that to tax should be small. Resolution about the budget, it resolved that the board of directors of the Van Leeuwen School District six and four, hereby pass the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, six, in total amount of twenty nine, two hundred fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. This budget now on file at the district administration office, four fifty five, ninth street, southwest, Danmore. It was all that the amounts shown below are hereby appropriated for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty five, for the following purposes. General funds, total thirteen million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty one dollars. Special revenue fund, but with four million, one hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Debt service funds, total five hundred and forty six thousand, five hundred and forty nine dollars. Capital projects funds, total one million, that's nine hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. Total of adopted budgets of twenty million, two hundred fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and six. Resolution opposing taxes, I mean, all the following, had the law on property taxes, hereby imposed on assessed value of all taxable property. Then the district, the tax hater, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, one, any amount of three dollars and nine seven zero two for one thousand dollars, assessed value for the permanent tax rates. Two, any amount of four hundred fifty one thousand, three hundred and fifty eight dollars for debt service and general obligation bonds. Resolution categorizing tax, it resolved that the taxes and codes that hereby categorized for purposes of Article eleven, section eleven B, as subject to the education limitation, permanent tax rate, three dollars and ninety seven cents for one thousand dollars. General obligation bond debt service, four hundred fifty one thousand, three hundred and fifty eight dollars. Above resolution statements were approved, players adopt on June ninth, twenty twenty five.
On favor, uh, budget? Sorry, resolution one? Uh, five point oh three, approved resolution one, adopting budget, making appropriate appropriations and taxes. More discussion? Favor? We've got to read that, it's, it's a pleasure here this week. And. Now we're gonna.
That's awesome.
Stay or go, I will leave it up to.
Alright, so yeah. Can I, I don't know what to say, I, I just wanted to thank Sam. Uh, I know David's not here either, but I want to thank you for your, your years and service on board.
Well, the community is very important.
So, thank you, I appreciate your giving your time and effort.
Well, I appreciate we, uh, you know, we are chosen by the citizens of good, I was kind surprised, but they said, well, we like the way your kids turned out, so I'll see what you can do.
And I have, David's not here, but I hope he gets back to him, that we appreciate his years.
Yeah, he gets stuck at work.
He had a work day.
The senders were very, very grateful to the service on the board. As we're going to public comment. Can all see and hear me loud enough? Guys, right, kinda how we are doing things, um, well. Statement, as we start getting into this. Uh, it's not a participation of board meetings, this, uh, governed by policy BDHH. Commenter should please include your name, I'm speaking of, if you speak for an organization, you can be an organization. Most person should be designated representative group or common, uh, purpose. Yes, we all get, uh, three minutes. For comment, so if you see me fidgeting with my phone, it's because I'm timing us, not checking it, so I don't think I'm getting disaffected. Was trying to keep us on. Orderly, commenters make of effective criticism, district operations and programs on public sessions and public, uh, board will not hear comments regarding individual district staff member. Nation building staff members, uh, should be sent to the super, can I will be cast, council for review of legitimate complaints involving individuals for policy detail, public complaints. Program board chair or vice chair, in this case, will connect with visitor, want to hear you guys. Connect with administrator, receive comments with the personnel, and then come up there. In hearing, kind of, uh, conducted the fourth board regarding personal, uh, personnel, shadow, face, and then session, so. A lot of the galavins. Stuff like that. Comments aimed at state federal protection classes are prohibited, so careful and courteous, uh, anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene or profane language. Lack of respect of others, personal attacks, let's keep it, let's keep it civil. Demonstrations in support or opposition to a speaker or his. Let's keep it simple. Basically, if you know, but, uh, we bear the love that you all showed up and we want to hear you, so, um, by order of operations, you usually go with kids in the district. Um, so students, parents of students, uh, if you live in the district, then if you live outside, of course, if you're working here, reside. Yeah, there's a max of thirty minutes, since after this, we're going over to the eighth grade graduation, uh, promotion, not graduation. We're down by. Five fifteen.
You start with the Van Leeuwen class, right?
Well, they actually. You know.
Um, anyway, I was having to see that the vision for the meeting is to empower all students to achieve their potential. That was great to see, and that's exactly what I would like to grasp. Um, I believe I'm focusing on speech and debate, just because that's, that's most of my idea to. What I'm doing now, um, I believe that that's speech and debate class is the very best class this school has to offer to prepare students for a successful future, one where they can formulate and express themselves through their written and spoken word, and ultimately prepare them to reach their highest potential someday. I was shocked and disappointed to hear that this administrator wants to transfer the speech and debate team, or teacher, to the middle school and make speech and debate an extracurricular after-school club. I believe this move will be the ultimate end to this program. One of Jim Rome's most famous quotes, one has been a profound impact on my life, is your level of success will seldom exceed your level of personal development. I'll repeat that, your level of success will seldom exceed your level of personal development. Personal growth and development happens when we choose the difficult, when we stretch and grow, especially when we're in a supportive and encouraging environment. I've been in just past two speech, speech events, and again, obviously meaning that these kids have done a tremendous amount of personal development. To rise to the challenge, you can get on that stage in front of their peers, parents and judges, and we're literally our performance. These students have most certainly had a supportive, encouraging environment with such a robust program. If this program gets gutted to a small handful of kids that are willing and able to take this class on after school and don't have any consulting supports, commitments, or transportation issues, they're not going to have that critical map of support from a larger team they otherwise would have if it's part of their student day. Uh, enough out of time, but my Tullis is a great example of this success, uh, to grow the class. She's done speech and debate for the past four years. She competed on national level, and you're in the graduation last week. Notice she received more scholarships than any other student, uh, my ten-year-old, I'm thirteen, uh, including a full ride. I, I'd just be surprised if that level of success wasn't in large part attributed to the skills, the confidence, the personal development that she gained through the speech and debate experience that reflected on her, um, scholarship applications, now to some mention. Um, the speech and debate has been obviously a very successful program, brings students to stay, uh, year after year, uh, and beyond in nationals. And I just believe we have a phenomenal instructor, who, by the way, I, I've never even met, uh, never had a conversation with. So anyway, I believe this class is best suited for students in their most, most formative high school years, among them, um, not at the middle school level, and that this current, uh, teacher is the only dual-credit certified speech teacher, which I think is great. Um, and the last thing is that I've heard some troubling rumors that, uh, these involuntary transfers, putting a transfer of the speech and debate teacher, um, are in retaliation of the teachers that have been most active in advocating, uh, on behalf of all the teachers to pay raise. So whether or not that's true, those most adversely affected by this transfer are going to be the students, and obviously, we're all here. And one of this room is for the students, uh, we want what's in their highest and best. Uh, and if any administrator loses sight of that, that they have lost sight of the core value of their jobs. This is my deepest hope that the administration can act on their highest and best version of himself and delete the speech and debate program, let change, thank you.
Hi, I'm Deja Ryder, um, well said, Danny. You know, um, my daughter is a freshman, she, uh, we live in my wife, and we transferred out of, um, two C J school district, school district to come up here. Um, and so far, I've been just really pleased with our experience. Um, I'll admit that I don't know to the depths of what the issues actually are, but the people I've talked to and heard from, um, regarding this change of staffing and shifting people around, I've definitely caught my attention, the fact that the students show up and are self-organizing, um, and the fact of the debate team, I mean, that is like, do you guys even know, like, the level of leaders and speakers that are coming out of this district and is from this program? Uh, my daughter was in leadership this past year as a freshman, and I just floored away with the quality of the kids, and so. Anyway, like, my heart overflowing, for all the hard work everybody does, and we definitely don't want to lose that. Um, I know I've got a limited amount of time, but I've worked in multiple schools, school districts in Hurry County, in Coos County, um, been site council at Harvard Lights, and so I've been pretty involved, um, in the education deals. And I've never seen this type of move before, um, where students are showing up with their teacher saying, hey, this is the right, we don't, we can't lose you, you're important to us. And as a leader myself, um, in my field, and all refuting leaders and yours, I know that you know that this is what we're after, we're, we're raising leaders, we want them to show up and speak up, um, and that's what they're doing. And I feel like as a leader, it's our not to be, we're limited listeners. And, um, also like admit, it's like, well, it didn't, maybe it wasn't the right action for this moment in time, you know, like, it's okay to reconsider. Um, so as the people with the power, I beg you, uh, without even knowing what I'm begging for, but I have a feeling I'm gonna learn a lot today for the rest of the meeting. Um, do you read this better? Oh, one minute. Okay, I wanted to, um, share just a few things off of a, a social media post, um, from one of the teachers, and she mentioned that other teachers came up to her saying that they agreed with what she said, um, that she said it well. Um, and that's, and Danny mentioned a few of the things, but I think the important thing is, um, permissioned is that the discomfort of this change isn't about the change itself, because as educators, we know that flexibility is a part of the job. Um, and we have to be like resilient and responsive and show up for our kids. Um, but you know, as an educator myself, I understand, and this teacher who made this post understands, like, education, you become a master, and it's a practice, and you show up and you get better and you get better. And then when you just sort of like pull the rug out, and you're like, okay, I know you're so magical and amazing at what you do, now I want you to go do it over here and like relearn it all. So it's, um, it's a real challenge. Are I saying that out loud? Um, so. Well, I hope I was impactful and you understood what I said, and just know that I'm here, and I just, I applaud all of you guys for being here, and a shout out to our kids and our teachers for all the progress you do, and for all the people.
Doctor Graham.
Thank you for the time.
Zoe Desura?
One. I want to thank all of you for being on to take public comment today. My name's Zoe Beverly Sura, and like Danny said, your two girls in the district, one who's entered in middle school, some are, and one's entering high school. And I mention that because obviously I care about all the buildings on this campus, um, and specifically the middle school and high school, both right now, because of that kids. That's, I don't want to seem biased, I'm not about to say. Um, I came to voice my concern over the recent involuntary teacher reassignment. I learned of them a couple of weeks ago, um, and since then, I've been trying to learn all I can about what motivated them and what the impact would be on the district, and consistent for our kids. Um, well, spoken to a lot of teachers, a lot of parents, and students themselves, and also the supervisors over the last couple of weeks. And I think that overall, my takeaway right now with what I've learned is that I feel like the impact. Um, I think maybe because fundamentally, we are all here today, thousands of kids, we can start with them. I think what I understand is that the district plans to reassign some of our star teachers in the high school, fancy middle school. Um, essentially removing longtime teachers who love their jobs, um, and they have deep subject expertise in the classes that they currently teach, um, so that they move to new position against their missions. Heard about this person, the speech and debate, the LA teacher at the high school who has a master's degrees, who's moving to the middle school. This place in Miss Guzman, who's also a starting LA teacher at the middle school, will be in a new convention position. Moving to the high school for a place, Ashlyn Pearson, so the group, uh, parents there, um, also Kate Conklin, who's very inspired, longtime history and social studies teacher at the high school. I don't hear amazing things about her classes, it's how she really gets excited about history, which is saying a lot for high school kids. Um, she's developed her own curriculum over all these years. And she is going to be swapped with Mr. Volk, who is a relevant new teacher at the middle school. I think that's that not only the students likely to suffer in these situations, because they don't have the teachers in these classes teaching them, they have a great room. Um, but you also risk losing some of your best teachers altogether. Some of them might feel like might be treated with more consideration and respect than other districts. We don't know how hard it is to recruit, find great teachers, yes. Um, I also know that one of them's actually filed stupid against the district because this might be a contract violation, which is obviously a sense prospect for the district, and I don't really have a lot of extra time to defend that, to contract negotiate, because currently stalled, because can't agree on scenarios for the teachers. Um, so why do this? I've been told it's test scores, it's find your shortfalls, but none of it makes full sense to me. Um, for instance, in social studies, there is no state testing, so why would that be rationale removing ELA or social studies teachers to one school or the other? If you weren't also gonna add to their workload and get some budget savings out of it. Um, anyway, I guess here kind of consistent logical answers to this question of why, which I think that you're not a stir up these rumors about losing the vaccine, and why are all of these impacted teachers, also the top leadership in the junior group, these ones? So I'm really craving some answers, some transparency, um, just straight talk, I think all of us are, um, so I hope that this meeting can help us.
Lorraine Robertson, please.
Carol.
Sure. Thank you.
Alright, my name is Michael Farrell, I have three students, well, two students in the district now, my senior just graduated. Um, I'm kind of speaking on behalf of all three of them today. Speech and debate had such an impact on my oldest son, on my senior, I think he would have dropped out had it not been for the impact that speech and debate brought out, and, um, without this force, it just wouldn't have driven us to that. I'm really concerned that putting this subject off to an after-school program is going to drive these introverted kids away. These are exactly the ones that need this program, they need this to come out with who they are, because they've been cycled their entire lives. Also, I'm really concerned about the amount of misinformation, um, rumors that I'm hearing from my students, a lot of what they're showing me, they're just concerned. They talk to their teachers, they talk to their peers, and it's a whole lot of gargles and misinformation, and they're scared. They really ask for some clarity for the parents, because we don't know what's going on, and what we're hearing is scaring us, obviously. We're all here going, what is going on? What are you taking away from our kids? Because as many of us have said, this whole goal is to drive opportunities for our children to find themselves. And by taking these programs and changing them and taking these teachers who have had longstanding relationships with these students and pushing them over to the middle school. My incoming junior is highly concerned that the art program that helped him process his PTSD is going to be, and will be left with no outlet at school. Ceramics has been a huge outlet for him to be able to have self-discovery and self-expression, and if we increase being limited to the students, more children like him will not have the ability to process their emotions. I'm asking for clarification for all of the parents here, and understanding what is actually happening to our teachers, so that we can process information along first things.
Speaker Linda?
My name is Jason, and I am, my mother is just, so, and I am. I am mostly coming here because I am searching for information. Because for a large, the last few weeks, I have been advised to. Not get involved in this whole situation as. There was a rumor that it could affect us being able to walk at graduation and. Rumors and but I would just like to say that. The speech and debate program really did help me a lot. And I probably wouldn't be able to stand here and talk about it if it weren't for that. As I am a very introverted person normally. But I would just ask that. If you guys could figure out any way to. Limit rumors and the spread of misinformation, it would be. Greatly helpful for, I think, everyone, me and the students. To not be so afraid to share our voices and to speak out. Because I know that was a big fear of mine and myself in the speech and debate program. Because we didn't want to get involved. Because we'd all be at risk of. Having a future, but. I. And also, I don't know the specifics of how the speech and debate program will be affected by being extracurricular. And that is more areas I've heard rumors about. But I hope that you all just consider that. From my understanding, you can only do speeches for four years and that's why many people take it in high school. If so, when they are seniors, they are, they have access to the dual credit through the college. And if they end up taking it and they graduate, they no longer have that opportunity unless they skip. Uh idea of doing speech and debate and that can very limit the growth in speech and debate. But I just hope that in the future, the school board can. If at all possible, be more open so that there isn't so much fear and spread of this information.
Uh my name is Anna Cruz. I have. One child still in the district and one that graduated. As a founding parent a few years ago, thanks to one of these great teachers here, so. I just want to speak in support of them. Um I've been. Trying to attend as many of the bargaining sessions as I could um and. Frankly, been pretty disappointed in what I've seen offered to them. Um. You know, a four percent raise doesn't go very far in Vanden. Um housing prices in the last three years on real estate agents have gone up twelve percent. Um let's see, you know, average inflation over the last three years. Five point seven percent, so that's uh four percent. Not even going to get you there. Um the teachers have come down quite a bit from where they started. They're willing to negotiate. Um I'd like to see the district. Do the same thing for them. Um they deserve it. I'm a daughter of a teacher. I know how much work they do after the bell rings. Before the bell rings. You know, all year long, so. I I just want to see the district make. Also, the other thing I've heard um is in regards to. The amount of reserves our district has in its budget. Um if anybody can give me, remember I'm getting from uh. The audit done by the teachers union was upwards of thirty percent. In reserves. Um can you show me a different number? And if it's anything above eight percent as a taxpayer, I'd like to see it go to the teachers. Um people doing the work here, so. That's still a reasonable number. I mean, none of us knows what's going to happen, but I do know if we don't pay our teachers. They're going to leave. The teacher's salary stays in this community, you know, they go spend it at local businesses. They buy houses here, so. You know, that's that's where I'd like to see it rather than in a reserve accounts, so.
Amber Burke.
I have a whole thing written out here, but most everyone has. Already touched on the main issues that I had to speak about. I will say that I have two kids in the high school right now. One of them is a fairly amazing speech and debate gal. Um due to scheduling things that happened in the middle of the year, Jessica got bumped out of speech and debate this year. And nothing we could do. Was possible to get her to somehow still be able to be part of that team and that was a really rough transition for her. What I do want to talk about just really briefly is um these involuntary changes that you guys are pushing through. Are hurting our kids, they're hurting our teachers and they're ruining morale. Morale is all you guys have and I just came. From a job working at Coast Community Health Center. Anybody heard about what's going on there? So I can tell you that when these these organizations get top heavy and bloated. And they stop caring about what people who's on the ground do. They end up having major problems like lots of employment lawsuits. We paid hundreds and hundreds, and I'm going to say again, hundreds of thousands of dollars in unemployment, in employment lawsuits. That's, I'm wondering if the board, if you guys know, what is your deductible unemployment lawsuits? Do you know? Because it's pretty high usually for most places. So if you have. Right now, let's say six teachers that are really, really unhappy with this change. And you have six teachers that decide to go to court. That's six teachers and six payouts and I guarantee you, you'll end up settling. They always settle, nothing ever goes to court. I managed to law for fifteen years, I'll tell you, nothing goes to court. You'll end up settling and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars will swim out of this district. Because those great teachers are going to leave. And they're going to take that with them and then we're going to be here trying to get in teachers. From where? I mean, is that the ultimate goal? Are we trying to just get rid of the teachers that are really, really great and maybe been here longer and maybe make more money? So we can get some inexperienced teachers in, because how does that benefit our kids? The fact is, I'm very concerned about the um. What's going to happen when these lawsuits hit and I promise you they will. I've just been in the legal industry and like I said, I wrote all those checks for Coast Community Health. I wrote those checks, I'm the one who worked in financing cut them and they are really painful to cut. So, Gavin.
Alright, so um yeah, I mean, a lot of things have been said. I mean, it's been happy about longtime teacher of the district. The way, the way I look at it is um and and I'm not talking about the the contract negotiations. Um that'll, I've been through a lot of those and and. Uh I'm talking about. That had to be a tough decision. Okay, and when you make, when you do a tough decision, one of the things I do is I do a cost benefit analysis. And I just want to lay out how I see it right now. I I see the cost is. An excellent speech program. Um you know, we haven't talked a lot about Ms. Hoffler's burger, but she, you know, uh runs a club, runs, you know, a small club here. Or a small school, but you know, I know kids that that value that club and and value the time with her. You know, she. Just volunteered a lot of her time to go on a a trip with me. You know, we have. We have some really unhappy teachers, that's a cost. Okay, um and. We have loss of goodwill. Right? Um you know, I I wouldn't say that I've had a whole lot of mental anguish on this. Uh I know that's another cost, there are teachers who've had some mental anguish, but I've definitely had a loss of goodwill. Um you know, I've been here for twenty five years. I I talked my daughter into being a teacher and I'm like, ah man, why would you? Because it's an awesome job. And maybe that's just because I worked in an awesome place and had a lot of goodwill for a lot of, a lot of years. But that's a big cost. Right? We all know you can't do this job well from eight to four. You gotta come in early and you gotta stay late. And that comes with goodwill. That comes with teachers that feel good about their job and feel good about the program. And feel good about their security. Right? Um you know, I. I'm proud of the field trips I've done for twenty five years and I want to do them again next year. Um that comes with goodwill. Okay. So what are the benefits of this? This change? Well, I've heard that saves money. I don't understand how it saves money. That's not changing. I I don't see that as a benefit. I've heard that teachers requested it. I haven't talked to that teacher. I, you know, that's, that's not a benefit. You know, there's talk about test scores. I, again, it's, it's in a, in a. Well, one of them's in a, a subject that we know test. I don't, I see the costs, they're huge, they're massive. They are massive, they're crushing your staff. I don't see any benefit. I see, this one is just so simple to me. I just want to say one more thing. I was in a meeting with uh an administrator. And that administrator was filling out a form and made a mistake in the form. And it was kind of a joke in the meeting and that administrator said, you know what? I think you gotta fix it, I'm just going to do it again. I don't want to have a mistake. I respect that. This is a mistake. Go back and fix it.
I'll do it.
Taylor, I teacher, uh with Trent and and Jen and everybody. Um I'm mainly here to just speak as a parent though, so I have two kids in the district in third and fourth grade. Um we moved here from Eugene because I thought it would be a great place to raise kids and it has been. And I want to keep it that way. Um since I've been teaching at the high school for eight years, I've seen our tech program go away. I've seen our health um careers program go away. We have less teachers. And less options for kids than we have. And I'm really concerned about the speech program going away for all the reasons mentioned. Um if the kids here for four years, they're going to be, they they need to see a lot of different people with a lot of different perspectives. And I'm concerned that when my kids get here, they're, they're not going to have some of those options. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the speech and debate program. And then I'm also here as a parent, I want my kids to go to a school where teachers are paid fairly. And where they're paid a competitive rate. We do really good work here. Jen and Trent, Kate and I, and I'm always speaking for high school, like we take kids to Yosemite, to the Redwoods. This golf, like all sorts of stuff where we're gone for three, four days, we're driving. We're with those kids twenty four hours, none of that's paid. We've never asked to be paid for any of that. And that's just, that's just speaking on the the stuff that I know very well personally, all the teachers do that. And and we do it. Obviously in part because I want to have those programs with my kids here, get here, but really why that's done is. Exactly what Trent says, it's goodwill and it's paying it forward. And it's essential that we keep that goodwill um. And and uh. You know, I'm I'm happy to have moved here, my kids have had a good experience so far, I want it to stay that way. We can't gut programs and we need to keep goodwill.
I assume that they were told that I picked a class. They said I get there in time too.
We're at the half an hour mark, it's been twenty minutes.
Okay, so if something bothers me the most, something like what you said, you said right off that in second round meeting and it has not happened to me and I don't know how to deal with it. That we are selfish and do not care about kids. Like if I link kid that would state that about me. This says the board may not come to you, but you are backing up everything I say here. They've asked me to give you some facts besides already knowing we're one of the lowest paid. Positions in the state of Oregon. You said there was a twenty three percent raise. That means I would make ninety five thousand, three hundred and twenty one and thirty one cents. You are not offering that, you're offering eighty nine, nine, two, two at the. Three years, which is a sixteen point zero three. If you look at the bottom of every column, that is the least of any column. Which is, this is the column that's most important because we have nowhere to go. Yeah. When I talk about other schools, it would take an over a nineteen percent increase in salary in the first year just to catch Koke Hill. So I'm going to have to skip a lot of this. So let's just talk about it because of the. Those statements, the narrative pushed into the community that we are getting a higher increase than we are not trying to. Fit the community against us and this environment has been created. I have applied for multiple jobs. The jobs are only a hundred and six thousand and a hundred and four thousand. That would pay me over twenty, well, if we get your, well, with your rate, twenty two hundred dollars a month more. So if you don't know how my retirement works, it's my best three years. That means I'd make over a thousand dollars a month for the rest of my life retirement. If my wife lives into her mid eighties, that means I would lose four hundred thousand dollars by staying here. If you want to use Koke Hill as an example. It'd be five hundred dollars more a month I would make in retirement, which equates to my wife lived in her mid eighties. An extra two hundred thousand dollars. You've shown that you do not care at this point about taking care of your long term employees especially. Like I said, I've been here thirty one years of raising the kids here. You know, I built and just built my last, hopefully my last home here and uh. You know, I just don't understand the lack of support from you guys. But yeah, I come and do my job every day, right? Not anyone understands this, I serve a higher person. God put me in this position, I come and do my job, I come and do it my best dad I can, but you've created an environment. Getting ugly, my morale is very damp, but I'll continue to find that, do the same job I do.
Amy York.
Essentially Amy already. It's okay, that's basically it. I just put part of it. Um I'm just piggybacking a little bit off of that, I support the teachers. I um know firsthand, my family's in retaliation to get pretty fiercely. To the point that we are moving at the end of this month. Um I have two kids in the district, one goes to the elementary school. She's had a great experience because of the teachers and the school admin at that school. Uh it's the only reason we even considered keeping her in because of how great they were. Um so I'm glad to keep supporting them. Um I wanted to say that. I'd like to see the board look at the policies. LAR, there's been some changes made, they're not sufficient. You know, there is just stretched it up a bit, he clicked on a button. Um. All of this complaints, sensitive complaints, like I tried to make was retaliated, retaliated against four. It's a super um. There's no solid way to make that complaint, it just says refer to the board chair. I was given three different ways, one of which went against board policies to make that complaint. I was. You get it all, but really you need to look at your policies because you can go a whole new book. You can get all these steps and abuse will happen if you don't have protections in your policies. LAR reforms. Can you just make the board chair's email? Like his professional email, his or her, the teacher, professional email available. To the people so they can make these sensitive complaints because it's terrifying. And I'm an open book if anybody wants this conversation. I would love to have it because I've been begging for help and I know people know. It's small town, we know everything, yeah. Nobody would even look at me. There's a handful of people that would and I can do for that. But we're out, you know, we don't have time, my son has disabilities and he's been unable to come to the. The high school um because of. The experience that he has had, it's been terrifying. So we're out, we don't have time for Vanda to get that together, but I really hope. For the up and coming special needs in the district, which is a growing population, I hope. Make a few tangible changes and stop the retaliation.
So we had. Seven point oh, we're going to try and make the motion. And our.